Thank you. We are going to now call to order the October 14th, 2021, meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners Committee of the Whole. And our first item of business this evening is a motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Commissioners Committee of the Whole meeting of September 9, 2021, and I so move. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions from commissioners in the room regarding the minutes? Any comments or questions from our colleagues who are on Zoom? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes have passed, thank you. Our first item of business this evening will be a presentation from Township Manager Manfredi about proposed revisions to the policy on public participation and policies and procedures for the Board of Commissioners and committees. And I'd like to preface this by saying tonight is an initial presentation. While we can certainly have some questions and back and forth, the hope is that we will have the opportunity to have dialogue with you over the course of the next month, when this item will appear as an actual agenda item on the Committee of the Whole for consideration of how to move forward. And with that, I will turn the microphone over to Township Manager Manfredi.
Thank you, Mr. Hecker. As Mr. Hecker said just now, but I think what he said last month when he introduced this subject, we took a great deal of time to make sure that we were addressing the various issues that were important to the Board, but also was very mindful of public participation. And as we looked at public participation, what became clear is that this was an issue of governance, not just an issue of how much time should people have to speak. When this Board changed the policy to go to the Committee of the Whole, the idea was to increase the amount of time that people had to access the government, additional five minutes of public participation and public comment. What had happened was that because of the pandemic, because of the fact that all commissioners were hearing everything at the same time and working together as one, less went to committees. Therefore, there was concern that there was actually a reduction in public comment. Not in reality, but there is a perception of that. So we began with that, and we began to consider looking at, how does the Board want to make sure there's public participation that continues and can be expanded upon? And most importantly, how do we govern? Approximately four years ago, we began a strategic planning process. It's an administrative process that sought to get the views of the elected officials in how the township did business when it's making decisions on the budget, how when it's making decisions on what are we going to accomplish? What are we going to do? In 2019's budget, we appropriated dollars for a strategic plan. Then the pandemic hit. But in order to keep moving forward with the development of a strategic plan, we decided to scale back that scope and move forward with setting up a strategic plan. We went through an administrative process, including reaching out to commissioners, and we embedded it in the proposed budget that is my responsibility to give to you, the commissioners. When Commissioner Hecker and I considered all of the various options and all the things we should look at, all of the discussions came back to where we are in time, where we are now post-pandemic. How is it that this Board wants to govern and do business and do good work for the people, but strategically, meaningfully? And this is what we landed on. And again, it's meant to continue a strategic approach to governance. So when you look at this, do not think that public participation was forgotten. Public participation is held on to and returned to what it was. But more importantly, this establishes a system where there is more meaningful discussion about the important issues facing the township moving forward. So with that, we'll begin the presentation. And this is about Board governance. So what we are looking at is a strategic integrated approach to governance. And one is to consider the current rules for public participation. Two is the restructuring of the committee system to enable the Board of Commissioners to govern at a strategic planning level that ensures the vision, mission, and focus areas reflect Abington Township. And three, to ensure the township operations are driven by the focus areas and the Office of the Township Manager and the administration are following the guiding principles in meeting objectives and achieving deliverables that meet the goals established by the Board of Commissioners. Everything we do as an administration comes from you. All that we've accomplished in the last four-plus years is because you have approved that initiative to move forward. We have been building the infrastructure for moving forward effectively. We began in 2020 with the strategic planning process, integrating it into how we do budgets. We're going to touch on that, and we're going to continue to build on it. When we asked, what are the focus areas that are important to the township that you, as the representatives of the people, identified? The priorities were fiscal sustainability, economic growth, innovative and high-performing organizations, safe, inclusive, connected, and sustainable community, and infra- Those five focus areas drove the strategic part of our budget and how we would fund and do the business we do. When we came back and looked at this and ranked them all, fiscal sustainability was number one. Infrastructure, number two. Economic growth, number three. Safe, inclusive, connected, and sustainable community, number four. And the innovative, high-performing organization was fifth. We took those five focus areas and embedded them in the budget for 2021. And that's why you see the proposed budget cover to illustrate that we took the focus areas, these priorities, and we put them into the budget process. One of the things that was done to participate this year became clear and evident that the high-performing and innovative organization was part of-
-did in all departments and across all focus areas. That is why the ring that is going through each indicates that it's a part of all things. It's not an individual area, it's a part of all things. So what this now means is as we go forward, we still have those four items, and those are- -the priorities that we've ranked that will be integrated in the budget.
And just as a reminder, the current strategic plan was for '21, '22, and '23. What we're talking about now in the-
-governance through the strategic approach is taking those same areas, those same focus areas- -that the Board has identified, that where they want their vision, that their mission, and everything to come out, with being updated 2023-
Strategic Plan. When you receive the budget, and when the budget-
-presented, then it's scheduled for the 27th of October-
-presentation. This too, just as we did with the focus areas and the guiding principles-
-for the strategic plan in the budget, will have separate, independent, updated 2023 strategic plan. And I'll talk about why that is what's proposed momentarily.
So when we talk about a strategic approach to governance through the- Committee Systems, what we have looked at-
-how do we take those areas and remain focused on what's important?
So fiscal sustainability is an area-
I apologize. We had a comment from a commissioner, your mic keeps cutting out. I don't know if other commissioners on Zoom are hearing that. So I apologize for the interruption, but this is obviously very important stuff, and we don't want to-
Now, I need to go to your mic. Maybe I can tell you-
I'm trying not to keep my people on this side of the room. So I was using this mic. So if there's-
Blanket forgiveness.
So if there's no objections to seeing my back, I'll put-
And again, apologies for the interruption.
The strategic approach to governance utilizing fiscal sustainability is the top thing. The Finance Committee already exists for that purpose. So therefore, there will not be any change to that. The scope of the Finance Committee will remain the same. But because infrastructure is such a high priority, and when you see some of the projects, you'll understand why the scope of that committee is being recommended. Economic growth, again, taking a holistic approach that the Board of Commissioners would look at this as a group, not as a committee. And then safe, inclusive, connected, and sustainable. The work that Commissioner Thompson and the Comprehensive Plan Development Team are doing and have been doing is a lot. And there are many, many chapters in that comprehensive plan. Many of those chapters are specific to safety, inclusivity, and connection in sustainable communities. Comprehensive plans so often are put on a shelf and reviewed every 10 years. They should be living, breathing documents. They should be updated on a regular basis. Every time a text amendment comes in, every time something major happens, it should be measured against that comprehensive plan to make sure that what is happening is consistent with that comprehensive plan, which is why this is being recommended as a committee. As I mentioned, the core scope and duties of the Finance Committee would remain as it is today. Policy matters pertaining to budget, township revenue, and expenses, and audit. And as Commissioner Vehe will tell you, the time that goes into that simple sentence is far greater than one might imagine. As an example, and you see this chart in the current budget, when we build in and integrate in the committees to what we do with our focus areas, our guiding principles, our objectives and deliverables, you see where these things rest with respect to scope, responsibility, and what committees handle what matters. So fiscal sustainability is the focus area. And if you look at the number three, again, guiding principle, we have guiding principles that we base the budget on that you approve. And implementing innovative technology initiatives to continuously update and support township business processes. One of the deliverables is you're going to see in a matter of weeks. We took the accounting system and converted it to a new accounting system and also are converting it to a budget system that is going to be more transparent, that people can go online and actually look at. So that was the deliverable, and the committee that we worked through as necessary was finance. And again, it's tied all through the focus area. We meet the guiding principle, this particular guiding principle, and that is the deliverable, and that's the committee with, I'd say, oversight of that area. The Strategic Plan Committee that's being proposed would be frankly the overarching committee to make sure that the vision, long-term vision, and all that is to happen to make sure that what you want to do occurs. If you recall, there is a vision statement, a mission statement, strategic focus areas, where we establish guiding principles, and then we integrate the strategic plan. The first thing that the Strategic Planning Committee would do, if this is created, would be to recommend a strategic planning consultant. And now that we're coming out of COVID, the hope would be that that can be a full-blown scope of services, including reaching out to the public, having public input information sessions so we can gather what the public thinks you should consider in establishing the vision, the mission, and the strategic focus areas for us to follow and deliver on. As an example, the overarching strategic plan, again, a statement of the scope and core duties, and then the deliverables, and then it would be the Strategic Plan Committee doing that. I am going to run through these a little faster than I might otherwise simply because we are well behind on the evening. The other committee that's being recommended is infrastructure. When you read the scope and duties of this committee and you look at what's coming, consider capital investment in parks, open space, trails, wastewater, pavement management, transportation, stormwater, utilities, and broadband infrastructure. Virtually every one of these things is going to be an issue for discussion in 2022 and 2023 and beyond. And we're going to have to develop a clear strategy for how we want to accomplish this. And then consider and review the Comprehensive Plan chapters related to parks, open space, trails, and transportation investment. I'm not going to get into what all of that means, but the point is, these are agenda items and issues sitting there waiting for this committee to begin working on so that the administration can deliver what it is that you want for the citizens of the township. Again, the focus area is infrastructure. There are guiding principles that have been established already, and we talk about the objectives and the deliverables. The stormwater study that is currently underway was delayed because of COVID. We're in the process of finalizing it. When the results of that stormwater study come back and you see what its recommendations are and the cost over 20-year period, it's going to require some discussion. And it would be the Infrastructure Committee in conjunction with the Strategic Plan Committee that we would be looking to for advice. And then the Comprehensive Consistency, Plan Consistency Committee. Again, ensuring relevance and consistency is measured against the township's mission and vision to enhance the quality of life for residents, considering any amendments to zoning or subdivision and land development ordinance. We have sitting right now amendments to the zoning ordinance that have been worked on for a year. That's going to have to get vetted. The zoning ordinance is going to have to be amended, and it needs to land someplace. And we need to make sure that the zoning ordinance changes, the subdivision ordinance changes, and any text amendment that might come about are measured against the comprehensive plan that so many people are spending so much time working on. And then, and of course, focusing on those chapters that are being currently developed, and in this particular, the housing future land use and the plans for the surrounding areas. The housing and future land use goes right to the heart of inclusivity. How we are living, where people are moving, how are we treating housing policy? So that would also be matters for the Comprehensive Plan and Consistency Committee. And again, following through, there are focus areas, there are guiding principles that this Board has sanctioned, and then particular objectives. You know, for example, completion of the Master Tree Plan, that is in fact completed. That is just a matter of getting it rolled out. Those are the kinds of areas that the Comprehensive Plan Consistency Committee would have under their purview. So how does the process change? Changes very little, candidly. We have it right now where the business matter comes into the Committee of the Whole. And what we have found, and what I have heard from many commissioners, is everyone wanted to hear everything upfront at the same time, right in the beginning, and then decide where it goes. What happened was that there were things that were routine or should not have been put off 30 days, where people were forced to wait to get either a land use approval or something as simple, and I hear this from Commissioner Hecker on a regular basis, when we're simply approving a PANDOT agreement, it shouldn't have to go through a 60-day review process. Mr. Jones knows what he's doing. He's been doing this for a while in that Public Works Department. It shouldn't be that complicated. So there are things that are routine or non-controversial that are not some policy initiative or some legislative decision. It's complicated. So we should be more swift in how we do this and be more nimble. So the current process would be tweaked to go back to more of how it really was, where it comes, there's an agenda matter, depending upon whether it's routine and non-controversial or not. It could go right to the Board of Commissioners meeting, to the regular voting meeting. It doesn't have to go through a committee or it doesn't have to go through any vetting process depending on the agenda item and the complexity of it. And what I would normally do is consult that committee chair or Board leadership, and we'd have a discussion as to whether or not that was something that should be acted upon. It's how we used to do it, we're going to try to go back to that. What you notice, though, is that the Committee of the Whole, in essence, is the full Board of Commissioners acting in a public meeting. It's a working session. You come, you sit in these meetings, you work on issues, and then you move it forward. The Board Working Session would be a non-voting meeting, so no one would have to be concerned that there was something happening at a working session that got passed through or voted on. It's set up to be a non-voting meeting where you do the business, you do your homework, you do the work, and then you move it either to a committee or for a vote. How do we do this? How do we change so that we can make sure that all of the priority levels are attained? Fiscal sustainability, I'm not going to read them again, but each focus area will have a committee that's focused on those things that are important to you. Meeting frequency, they would be quarterly. And when I say quarterly, they'd be scheduled quarterly. That doesn't mean if there's a lot of work for a committee, if there's something in the strategic plan that they need to meet more frequently, they can. When I show you the matrix, you'll understand why it's quarterly. When you look at your, when you look at this matrix next, by doing it quarterly, one of the things that commissioners have said oftentimes is that they like to be able to attend other committee meetings and participate if they would like to. Allowing it this way, where it's quarterly, everyone is staggered. So if somebody wants to go to another meeting, they can. If they want to participate, they can. Plus, it gives greater flexibility in scheduling, but it stays on the same calendar for the most part as we currently are. So what are the key revisions to what we're recommending? One, public comment during committee meetings will remain after each agenda item and also prior to adjournment on general matters of the committee's purview, which is how it was under the old committee system. Public comment during Board Working Session, formerly the Committee of the Whole, will remain at five minutes at the beginning of the meeting to continue the expanded opportunity for public comment. The agenda management process changes will provide the Board greater flexibility in conducting business in a more timely and efficient manner, more akin to the process prior to the pandemic. It establishes the Board President will appoint members to committees, and committees will select their own presiding officer. And for Board members, you know that that's a change in how it's currently done. Establishes the Board President is Presiding Officer of the voting and non-voting working session meetings for the Board of Commissioners. For the public, if you notice, we have the regular voting, regular meeting of the Board. There's one presiding officer in the Committee of the Whole. There's another presiding officer. This change, the President of the Board would be the presiding officer at both sessions. It establishes that the presentations will be the time of the related agenda items, affording the public an opportunity to comment on the content of the presentation. So for example, if there's a presentation like this this evening, this is not part of public comment. There is not public comment on the presentation because it is solely a presentation. In the future, presentations would be at an agenda item so that you would allow public comment. Again, it's an expansion of public comment. And restructuring committees to establish a strategic approach to governance. And again, this is really important to note. It's based upon a strategic approach, meaning, how is it you really want to do business? Where do you want to spend your time? And what's meaningful in achieving results? Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Manfredi. I just want to underscore a couple of Manager Manfredi's comments. This really, I think this proposal provides us the flexibility to guide and govern at a more strategic level that is focused on a shared vision that we will develop in connection with the residents of the township, and then ensures that our activity together drives towards executing on that vision, both in the short run and in the long term. And so with that, I'll open it up for feedback, recognizing that this will come back to the Committee of the Whole next month as an agenda item for us to consider whether to move this forward to the full Board for review and approval in December with the idea that this would be implemented in January of next year. So I'll start with any comments or questions from commissioners in the room. Thank you, okay. Any comments or questions from commissioners participating via Zoom? Okay. Hearing none. Manager Manfredi, I'll thank you for the opportunity to work together on that process, and I look forward to bringing this back to the Committee of the Whole in November.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We will now move to public comments on agenda items before the Committee of the Whole this evening. And I will start with any members of the audience who are here in person who would like to comment on agenda items this evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Joe Rooney, I live on Maple Avenue in Ardsley. Two issues. The first one is I agree that I believe that the PREIT, and I don't know what the number is, that should be postponed. I went to the last couple of 7:30 in the morning meetings, and I'd mentioned to one of the commissioners before. I was quite surprised. Mr. Lionetti spoke two meetings ago, that's the school district, and he gave really good information there. And then he explained that he was going to meet with the PREIT representatives subsequent to that meeting and before the next meeting, which is the one that occurred on Tuesday. And Mr. Lionetti seemed to significantly change his opinion on his information on that, on that second meeting. So I would like to know what happened in that other meeting that went on between the PREIT people and Mr. Lionetti, who was sort of representing the school district, but also was a member of that committee. I'd like that to be figured out. Now, the follow-on is, Mr. Manfredi just talked about public participation. So am I allowed to address that?
Yes.
Excellent. So there's a lot of people that come up here, and they don't have an opportunity, or they don't talk a lot in front of a Board. They don't talk in a microphone, they don't talk when they're on TV. So you are our elected officials. Either the chairman of the Board is there or the chairman of the committee is sitting up there. And you run the meeting. I think it would be highly appropriate, this is my opinion, that if you needed something from somebody who's not an elected official sitting up here, you could turn and ask them for it. And if an individual that wasn't sitting up here and isn't an elected official had a comment, then he ought to have a little electronic or a little red button that he can push so that he doesn't interrupt somebody, because it's very intimidating to stand up here with you all. I'm not intimidated personally, okay? But there's an awful lot of people who are. And there's no reason to be intimidated, but they are. So when you have people sitting in the peanut gallery that are interrupting people when they're in the middle of their talk, it certainly breaks their conversation, and it certainly puts them off their game. So I would think for all the people who come up here that have some specific issue that they want to talk about, they should be able to make their comments, even if it's a little tangential, even if it's wrong, without being interrupted. And I think the chairman of the committee or of the Board itself should be the one that runs the meeting. And if he needs some other input from somebody else, I mean, Nathan might need input or somebody, he should ask, he should ask them for that input rather than just somebody who's not elected chiming in. And I think that would be a lot more courteous to our citizens who are here directly to make comments to the Board. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Are there any other comments from members of the audience in person? Hearing none. We will turn to comments from members of the community who are participating via Zoom.
Okay. Mr. Tobin, your microphone has been unmuted. You'll just need to unmute on your device.
Okay.
Your name and address for the record, sir?
Mike Tobin, 642 Kirkwood, Jenkingham, PA 19046. My question is regarding what Mr. Manfredi was talking about, the revised, the whole revised process. Is there going to be anywhere in there where the public can actually speak to the commissioners and get answers directly? Rather than just, you know, talking and saying what's on their mind, have a dialogue with the commissioners? Because there's a lot of times questions are asked of the commissioners, and we don't get answers back. And there should be a way of having a dialogue back and forth with the commissioners. In addition, I know exactly what Mr. Mooney's talking about. A couple meetings ago, there was somebody speaking, and there were people going behind the bench. They were talking to different people. And it was obvious that a lot of people on that, up that's sitting in that front row, were not paying attention to what that speaker was saying. If there was a dialogue that was able to be had, people would have to pay attention to what the speakers are saying. A lot of times, I don't think he's even listened to what the citizens are saying. That's, you know, an opinion, but there should be a way of having a dialogue with the commissioners and the Committee of the Whole, or whatever you want to call it. There should be a way for everybody, the citizens, to be able to talk to the Committee of the Whole and get answers back right then and there. Not just- of the whole and get answers back right then and there, not just say what's on their mind and then move on. The second thing is, what Mr. Manfredi was saying, who decides routine and non-routine? And that's a question, and in the current rules, I'll probably never get an answer on that. But who specifically decides what is considered routine and what is not?
That is, that is a consideration that is made between the township manager and board leadership.
Okay. So in, in theory, in theory, the whole Preet Willa Grove Mall thing could be considered routine.
No, that would not, because they are requesting an amendment to our zoning code, and that is not a routine matter of business.
Okay. When, when somebody, I'm getting all my questions out that I can right now.
Okay, well, go ahead.
When, when there is a, like, when I look on the website and I see the, like, the Penn State thing that got moved to next month and all, who actually is writing their request? Is that, that the township? And I'll give you a specific example. On, on Penn State's change of the text modification, or whatever you're calling it, green space goes from 62% to 55%.
Yeah.
And so who, who wrote that in there? Is that what, is that what they are requesting, or is that what, is that what the commissioners are considering?
That is, that is the request of Penn State, Abington, to accommodate the academic building that they are seeking to build on their campus.
Okay. So that is not, so the commissioners then in fact could go back and say, no, you can't lower to 62, you know, 62% green space, you can't lower it at the 55, you can lower it to 60, but you can increase impervious space to, you know, to 55% or whatever.
Well, I won't get into specifics this evening, but the very reason that we did not have the hearing this evening is that there were additional concerns that have been raised that need to be vetted thoroughly before moving forward.
Okay. And I'd see, that's the thing, like, we, we as the citizens do not know what all those specific concerns are. So we're asking, we have all these questions running around in our head, and you may already know that, hey, the green space thing's a big issue, but we have no way of knowing that. So that's...
Well, what I'd say to that, Mr. Tobin, and then your time has just about expired, so I'll hold the clock for a second, is that the process that has played out to date has involved numerous meetings with the immediate neighbors who are going to be directly impacted by this, both with Penn State and myself alone, where I met with them at least four times since taking on this project to go through their, those concerns.
Okay. I'll wait till I get my next five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Call in the next resident.
Laura Lehman. Honest to goodness, Mr. Hecker, you did not meet with the residents. You met with, like, eight people one time, and the residents, the rest of the...
Ms. Lehman, I'm going to stop you right there. At the request of those residents who live on Cloverly Lane and School Lane, I've had multiple meetings with them over the course of time, most recently a few weeks ago.
And then you represented that the residents were in favor of what you were doing, and you should go ahead and put this on the agenda for a hearing.
That's not what I said, Ms. Lehman.
Well, let me just tell you, they were not ready for it.
Ms. Lehman, I actually know that because I'm in communication with them.
Who's speaking comments are these? Are they yours? Because I'd like to start again.
Yeah. Ms. Lehman, please continue. But I'm not going to let you have misinformation being spread during the course of...
Yeah, you are, because these are my comments. They're not your comments.
Your comments are factually inaccurate, and I'm not going to allow them to continue. If you have comments...
If you disagree, well, time this, please, okay? If you disagree with my comments, you're not allowed to say, well, my comments are more important and your comments are wrong. My comments are different than yours, and I think the proof will be in the pudding. I would like to start my minutes over because...
We're not going to allow that, so please continue and get to your comments about the...
You have completely interrupted my...
Please get to your comments about the agenda. That is what this comment period is about. Please focus your comments on the agenda.
This is unbelievable.
I concur.
So right now, I can't even, I can't even tell you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you that you did not invite the neighbors. Most of the neighbors did not even know you were having the meetings, and they did not...
The meetings were called by the neighbors to which I was invited.
This is not a debate, Mr. Hecker.
I agree. And Ms. Lehman, if you continue down this path, I'm gonna, that will be the end of your comments.
This is not a debate, Mr. Hecker. These are my comments. Please be quiet and allow...
They're not comments. They are misrepresentations of what actually happened, and I'm going to counter you when you misrepresent the facts. Get to your point.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness. There is absolutely nothing illegal that you don't mind doing. This is absolutely illegal, what you're doing. I'm telling you that you met with people and other neighbors did not even know the meetings were happening. I am telling you that you have interrupted all of my comments and taken my time. I want that time back. This is unbelievable.
Please continue with your comments, Miss Lehman. You have two minutes and 15 seconds remaining.
No, I do not. I have five minutes, and stop interrupting me. That is unbelievable. Start my five minutes now, please.
No, Ms. Lehman, you have two minutes and five seconds. Please get to your comments.
Oh, my goodness. Are you going to be quiet now? Because I want to speak without being interrupted. This is unbelievable. I hope somebody else in the audience will stand up and say, this is not okay. I hope you come forward and stand there until I get my minutes back to speak. This is unbelievable. Okay? So first of all, the Penn State thing was absolutely improperly done by you.
Ms. Lehman, Penn State is not on the agenda for this meeting. If you have comments about the agenda items, I urge you to get to them.
I would be happy to do that. I would be happy to do that. How about if you stopped debating me? Okay? So I will tell you that what we had here on the agenda tonight was the presentation about public speaking, and the presentation about public speaking is actually making things worse. You did nothing to find out what the problems with speaking were by the residents and to fix the problems that the residents were having. One of those is five minutes of speech on agenda items where we have absolutely no idea what you're going to do. The Preet matter that's on the agenda tonight had no business being on the agenda. It went to an EDC meeting where the full 20 pages of documents showed up a day and a half before the meeting. That is completely inappropriate. And then the entire unit that was advertised, the meeting that was advertised, didn't even say it was the mall. I had to write you and ask you to put that on there. This is so unbelievable, what you're doing. The figures that were presented at the EDC meeting are completely bogus. And if you are going to make a decision and go forward tonight on those bogus meetings, $13,500 per student? No, it's not. It's $22,000 per student. It is unbelievable what's on there. One of the things that's considered revenue is the building permit. Building permits often take an inspector to, to take care of the work that's done.
Ms. Lehman, please wrap up your comments. You're over time.
And cost more than the permit. I would like, I'm invoking right now Rule 710(c) of the Sunshine Law to tell you that I am interrupting per that section, 710.1(c) of the Sunshine Law, and I would like to address the improper ability to speak that is being afforded to members of this township. First of all, in this township, when you put some...
Ms. Lehman, please, please hold for a second. I am going to consult with the solicitor.
I am addressing the Sunshine, under the Sunshine Law. You may not cut me off.
Ms. Lehman, your time has expired. Thank you for your comments. Solicitor Clark, could you please address the comment that was made?
Sure. All, all residents have a right to bring perceived violations of the Sunshine Act to the board's attention. It is not designed to be a way for someone to just enact a filibuster by saying, I'm saying this is a violation of the Sunshine Act, and I'm going to continue to talk without interruption for as long as I would like. That's not what it's intended for. The resident has referenced that she believes the Sunshine Law has been violated. She's brought it to everyone's attention, and now she has avenues available to her to move forward with that complaint if she deems it's appropriate. But you are well within your rights to end her public comment and continue with the orderly conduct of this meeting.
Thank you, Solicitor Clark. Can we bring in the last resident on Zoom?
Mr. Morris, your microphone is unmuted. You'll just need to unmute your device.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. Paul Morris, Lynn Road, Jenkentown. My comments are made regarding Preet and the apartments at the mall as it's on the agenda. The school student data that was presented at the EDC meeting is just 100% wrong. Preet said 14 students were going to be going to Abington, and 10 additional ones would be going to private school. There's absolutely no way to determine that in advance. In addition, all of the information that is available, including the National Association of Home Builders, says that the data indicates it'll be between 62 and 100 students per 100 units, and, or, I'm sorry, 21.9 per 100 units, and what that translates to is 62 up to 100, depending on how you're going to calculate it. The EDC was also told that the cost per student at the Abington School District is $13,000 per student. That is entirely incorrect. If you divide the numbers, it's 22,000. I have no idea where Preet got their number of 13,000. That translates into $1.8 million of cost for the Abington School District. That figure is substantially higher than Preet said. Preet claimed that the 375 apartments will provide the school district additional dollars of $1 million. That's 100% incorrect. The cost is going to be $1.8 million for educating the students, and if you take that $900,000 out, or that $1 million, it means it's going to cost the taxpayers between $1 million and $800,000. And this doesn't include building any additional classrooms, which 82 students would require that. The bottom line is, this project is not good for Abington. Now, I would like to say, one of the gentlemen on the EDC had some great recommendations for the mall, and everybody knows the mall's in financial trouble. His recommendations were team up with Abington Jefferson Hospital, team up with Penn State. Both of them need additional room. Also, consider offices at the mall, more restaurants. Abington doesn't have enough restaurants. Look at warehousing, more entertainment venues over there, and I know there's one going in, but additional entertainment venues, and including maybe an auditorium that would provide the ability for additional venues in this district. I think there's a great opportunity for the mall. We know it's in financial trouble, but building apartments, 375 or 2,500, is a disaster for Abington Township. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. I think we have one final resident.
Ms. Powell, your microphone has been unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Madely Powell, 1920 Fleming Avenue. Mr. Morris, I love your ideas about what to do with the mall besides putting in an apartment complex, and I totally agree that we have to be a little bit more progressive and think outside the box and not just follow what investors are trying to tell us is the best thing to do for that property. And the mall, they keep saying the mall is in trouble. Preet themselves said that the mall is still considered to be one of the third largest and most successful working mall in this area. So it's not that much in trouble. But besides that, I don't see how letting Bloomingdale's sell their property to put up an apartment building for, for an investor builder is going to benefit the mall, other than bring some small pedestrian traffic. But I just don't see the benefits in it for the mall. And definitely, since I live near the mall, I don't see the benefits for the community. The traffic's going to be horrible. It's going to affect our Pressmont Park and our swimming pool because we're going to have a lot more residents in the area that will be utilizing it. There's just so many things that are wrong for this project. And I, I agree with Mr. Morris about the numbers. I mean, I was at that meeting, and I heard them give the 13,000 per student. I'm a, I was a teacher in this district, and I know it's 22, at least 2,200 per student to educate them. And I know we charge people that come from outside the district that want them to the benefits of wonderful Abington School District. The other thing I questioned was the fact that they were telling us that almost 30% of the new students from the apartment complex were going to go to private schools because the apartments drew like a higher economic level of, financial level of people going into them. Well, if that's the case, if they're going to pay that much money, they're moving in because they're moving in for the school district. If they've got children, they are looking at when is the best public school for their children. And there's nothing saying that they're looking for, ooh, how close am I to a good private school? It's how close am I to a very good public school, which Abington is? I may be a little prejudiced on that matter, but I think it is. And that's one of the things that drive why people move into this area, and it also is what keeps up our housing prices. I mean, we have houses that are going for, in other areas, should be going for $250 or going for $350. Why? Because people move in for the school districts. The families move in. And that has to be considered, and it is not going to be, it's going to affect our, our school taxes, and, you know, quite frankly, they're high enough. And how do you justify that after they put in, my other point was that once you change that zoning language and allow this apartment complex, is there anything in the zoning language change that's going to limit it to one building on the Bloomingdale parking lot? Or are you opening it up to another building on the Macy's parking lot? And another building on where Kmart, on the, where the Kmart used to be, I don't know, it's U-Home or something like that?
It's a different property.
That's all Abington properties. And how are you going to say no to those builders and those investors when you've already changed the language and allowed Bloomingdale's to sell their property and bring in a high-rise apartment? So we're not talking one building. I mean, nobody is that naive. That's my, my, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. We do have one additional resident.
Mr. Vithi, your microphone has been unmuted. You'll just need to unmute your device.
Hello? Can I be heard?
Yes, you can, sir.
Hi, I'm Richard Vithi at 1719 Edchell Road in Abington, 1901. I don't want to speak very long. I just, I did send the commissioners an email voicing my opposition to the Preet apartments for the reasons that have already been enumerated by my fellow residents. So I just want to reemphasize my opposition to it. As a resident that lives relatively close to the mall, I would likely suffer some of the congestion and other consequences of such development. I don't think that there's any plan to improve the infrastructure around the area to support what would likely be larger traffic or in and out of the mall parking area, which right now is relatively quiet. So with that said, I will, you know, end my little spiel, but I just feel like it needs to be said over and over again. It's not appropriate for Abington, not for that site.
Thank you for your comments. We will now move to the agenda, and we have one item of unfinished business, and this is for us to consider the request of Pennsylvania Real Estate Investment Trust petition. petition to amend the township's zoning ordinance. And before I turn it over to Manager Manfredi, I do want to make it clear to those who are in attendance here this evening and those who are participating via Zoom, the consideration tonight is not actually to approve any changes, but what action steps to take as a next step. We will not be voting tonight to approve or deny anything. Just want to make that clear. Manager Manfredi.
Thank you, Mr. Hecker. Mr. Herman is here from Preet. He has been advised that he has 10 minutes to give a very succinct presentation on the economic benefits and long-term viability. He understands that there will be no vote this evening on the ordinance to move, to be approved in any form.
Certainly.
It's really just Mr. Herman is here.
All right. Well, Mr. Herman, if you would wish to address the board, please do so.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and to speak for a few minutes. You have on the screen this evening is a brief summary of the information we have been conveying to the township that deals with the economic benefits of the proposed modification of the zoning ordinance that would permit multifamily to be built at the mall. And the connectivity of that transaction and taking the capital from that transaction to redeploy it into the Bloomingdales, to reset the Bloomingdales, which we think is a very, very important part of the viability of the mall long-term. And with the new Bloomingdales, it would be a downsized store. It would be a state-of-the-art store. And we've been in dialogue with Bloomingdales. And us putting up the capital is the incentive for them to want to keep the store at this property. The first slide I'm going to show you is the existing taxes that are being, that come out of the mall. So approximately $6 million in total taxes come from the property today. The next slide is a simple summary of if we added the multifamily project, which is one building, 365 units is what's being asked to be built there, it would produce roughly $1,004,000,000. And that's based on valuation in the neighborhood of $95 to $100 million total cost for the project. This next slide, I would like Peter Angelides, who is on the Zoom with us this evening, who is president of E-Consult, to speak to how the money flows both to the township and school district and accounting for expenses that we believe are fairly accurate as to what it would be both to the township and school to give us a net number.
Okay.
If we could have Peter.
I believe he's out on the panel.
Good evening. I hope you can hear me.
We can, thank you, sir.
Fantastic. So this slide shows township on the left, the school district on the right. There are really three types of additional revenues to the township. There's property tax from the new multifamily building. There's earned income tax from the residents. That's half a percent of their earned income. And then local services tax. And those are all incremental revenues from the town, to the township from the development. There are also additional expenses the township would bear. There are more residents, so there's more administration, more fire protection and more police action that we estimate would be approximately $170,000, $168,000. For an identity to the township, $163,000. Similarly, for the school district, $1.1 million in property tax, earned income tax, the same amount, $1.24 million in additional revenue. And the expense is, extra expense, the extra children, as mentioned multiple times earlier today, 14 additional children at $13,500 per student. And keep in mind that we acknowledge that the average cost for a student is $13,500, sorry, it's $22,000, if they're out. But the extra cost, incremental cost, the cost of the extra student to the school district itself, in other words, it's born locally and not by state or federal sources, is about $13,500. And we did review that methodology, that's what I'm adding. Said that we were right, it's great.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. What I'd like to do now is also turn to another slide about economic impact. And this is a slide that represents all of the fees that would be paid, one-time fees, as it relates to the multifamily project. And you can see, based on what's required for the permits, et cetera, it totals roughly $3.8 million additional fees being paid to the township for that project. I think it's important also to then turn the attention, what happens if it doesn't go forward? And the money's not available and capital's not available? And what we see happening with the mall? We believe this asset for a very, very long time. We've deployed a tremendous amount of capital in repurposing former department store, adding tenants, providing state-of-the-art retail within the property. And our concern is no Bloomingdales. Yes, the box would go dark. You should anticipate, you know, further reduction in real estate taxes for that box on itself. But more importantly is the demise of the mall will take place. The co-tenancy clauses that are there with the leases and the net effect of income being, it would drop because most of those tenants have the right to expect certain anchor tenants there as the draw to the mall. And so what happens then is that property would decline, right? You would lose tenants or you have tenants going to alternate minimum rent. You would have other economic impacts would be happening. And a natural progression is then us continuing to file tax appeals. And this slide shows you hypothetical, if you took a 20% reduction, a 30% reduction, a 40% reduction, et cetera. You can see quickly the amount of taxes that would be lost. So going back to the first slide of almost $6 million, you would watch this come off of that number, right? And as the valuation of that asset declines, you should fully expect to see the real estate taxes being requested to be reduced ratably as the buildings, you know, either vacancy or reduced income coming in. So it was important to understand, and we don't have actual numbers because our hope is we never get to this point and we never have to worry about that. That would be terrible for all of us. The last, one of the last slides here, I'd like Peter to get back on and talk about the number of schoolchildren and the various other studies that were out there and how we arrived at our 14 students. Peter?
Thank you. Yeah, this table shows actually six separate calculations of students in a development of this size. So keep in mind, this is a mid-rise multifamily development with more than, more than 20 apartments. It's new. And we consult, have a, I wouldn't call it a proprietor, but we have great experience in analyzing the most current census data that's made available to estimate the number of school students, both all students and public school students that are in very similar situations. In other words, based on census data that we, that everybody has access to, you can look for residents of multifamily buildings that were built within the last five years. And you can choose the geography, what you're looking at. And we look at geography of basically suburban Philadelphia, not the city, but the inner ring suburbs, not based similar to Abington. And basically, all the, account of all the students living in those kinds of apartment buildings and that's what this number represents. Our numbers are multipliers, which is basically the first group of numbers represent. So if you look at the two-bedroom units, there are 182 of them. There are .078, which means 7.8 children for every 100 units. And that's the first column, that's public school students, not including students who go somewhere else. The second column, all students, that's the public school plus any other school-aged child wherever they go to school. And when you do the math on that, it's 14 public school students. All students are 24. There are two other studies out there done using different methods. The Rutgers approach, basically sent a survey, the investigators, the researchers, sent a survey to hundreds of apartment buildings in New Jersey and calculated basically the same kind of thing, multipliers by unit size. And their estimate is between 23 and 30. When you apply those numbers to the apartment building that Preet's proposing, between 23 and 30 school-aged children, which is very much in line with our estimate of 24 school-aged children. The National Association of Home Builders have a different methodology, but same basic idea. And using their numbers for Pennsylvania specifically, you get between 15 and 26 school-aged children. Again, our number of 24 is between 15 and 26. So that gives us great comfort that our numbers line up with other studies that are out there and our estimated public school students, ultimately what matters, not how many school-aged children, but how many public school students there are. And that number is 14 in our analysis.
Thank you, Peter. On this, this next slide here, did you want to touch on the data sources or just to point out?
Thank you. These are literally straight from the original data source. These are the tables where we get our numbers from in the study. So if you were to flip back and forth, you could see that the yellow column is in the previous slide, 1.63410. So all of these three arrows represent the Rutgers study on the left and the NHP study on the right. The three circles are the multipliers that we use.
Okay, thank you. And then the last slide, did you want to add any other further comments about how the calculation and the methodology was taken?
I think these bullets really are just the same thing I just said. This is the narration of, as to how I described the calculations.
Great. Thank you, thank you. And in summary, that's the information. We synthesized it, so it's very quick and easy to read through. You have copies of all the reports. You have copies of E-Consult's report. You have the information we provided throughout all the public meetings. And we leave it with you for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. I'm going to open it up and see if my colleagues have questions for you. Start with Commissioner Bahe and then I'll go to President Spiegelman.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Appreciate the presentation. I just want to develop some of the record here, if you don't mind. I believe the first time we came to the board with this proposal was in December of 2020.
Sounds right.
Yeah. And this is, I believe, your ninth time in a public meeting in the township for the proposal?
Officially, we also had our own meetings prior to.
That's right. How many of those were there?
There were two of those.
Okay. So 11 public meetings to discuss the proposal. So for the last 11 months, you've been having public meetings regarding the development?
Correct.
All right. So the last two were at the Economic Development Committee. And there's been some debate about the students that could be added to the school district numbers. As I recall, you know, there is some debate in the public regarding the cost per student, but the school district representative on the EDC did not actually debate the amount of cost to add students to the district, correct?
He did not debate it. He agreed with this methodology.
Yeah. The only debate there was, was, you know, how many students there might be.
Correct.
All right. And, you know, there's no crystal ball. We can't say for sure what those numbers are going to be. You're using data to try to guesstimate that.
That is correct.
And based on the numbers that were just presented, it looks like the top-line numbers, 30 students can be expected to be added to the school district.
Correct.
So even at that, the 13,500 that it would cost to add this per student to the district, were at about $400,000 in extra expenses to the school district in a worst-case scenario.
That is correct.
And that's still less than the added tax revenue you're projecting that the school district will receive from the project. Okay. Thank you. So I've reviewed the tax amendment and, you know, I don't see any cap on units that would be permitted on the tax amendment. Am I missing something?
So there, as I recall, there's not a cap on units. But if you look at the methodology of how you arrive at a buildable area and what's required, like a minimum square footage percentage of the project is must be retail, parking counts, things like that. And so green space, open space, et cetera, limits what you can actually physically build there.
Okay. I, you know, I'm generally supportive of this project. I do want to have greater comfort on what the tax amendment would grant. And I think you might have received further questions about that from my colleagues. That might be an area to discuss further. I don't know if this is the right forum to do that. Obviously, it would be a public forum, which is not sure this night's meeting at 8:45 is the right time. But I just want you to be aware, you know, generally supportive. But I want to make sure that when we're granting this, if we grant this, that is the concept that we've all had in our mind of a 365-unit apartment building, which is not what I see in the amendment right now as drafted.
I understand.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner Bahe. President Spiegelman?
Thank you, Vice President Hecker. Mr. Herman, I actually, I, this kind of popped into my head after the EDC meeting. The numbers, the projected numbers on, or even ranges on numbers of children based on the various, the various data calculations, is that based on 100% occupancy, projected occupancy of the proposed apartment building?
So let me defer to Peter, if I may, but I believe the answer is yes. Peter?
Basically, yes. It's based on customary occupancy. So, you know, there might be some apartments vacant, you know, someone moved out and then moved in. Typically, it seems like 5%.
Okay. Thank you. I, that's an important clarification, so thank you.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. Commissioner Schreiber?
Thank you. I appreciate how many meetings that you have had, and this has been a long time coming. And I also really understand that the economics of this mall and retail in general is doing very poorly. And in these times, I totally get all that. And yet, with that being said, I am also a neighbor of this and have some real concerns about having a large apartment building at that part of the mall. I, some of the comments that were made earlier, I agree with that. You know, the traffic, the, you know, different things like that. But I believe what we're doing here is not saying that we agree with the project or not, but that we are passing it on so that we can have further discussion. I believe that is what we agreed to at the beginning.
I think we're deciding what to do next. But this is not a vote to approve or not approve the project this evening.
Good, okay. The other thing I, that kind of comes, oh, and let me just also say, I had a hard time seeing your slides. We have these slides or we don't?
Yes, you have, you have all this information, yes.
It was like an eye test here tonight for me. I couldn't see any of it.
That was not our intention, so apologies.
I couldn't see any of it, really. But I'm wondering, though, about repurposing the mall itself instead of a separate building? And maybe you have discussed that and I haven't heard you discuss that. You know, I might have missed it. I haven't been on all the meetings. I saw a little tiny bit of the EDC before I had to go to work. So I'm wondering if it has been considered to put apartments into or building up on the actual footprint that exists instead of another building on there? And, you know, having sort of a multi-use for that actual mall site? So again, I apologize if you've already talked about that, but it's just something that me and other people in my neighborhood want to know.
So I'll make it as brief and succinct as possible. It was looked at, it is thought about. There are a lot of complications with an enclosed regional mall that we as landlords are subject to all these other rights that have been given to the tenants, both the department stores as well as in-line. And so to try and envision placing a building on top of an existing operating mall creates all kinds of challenges, none the least of which is creating the environment for the new renters that is conducive to being market, right, an apartment today. And if you took a department store, for example, assuming you had a department store to do it with, right? You still have the other parts of the problem, so let's go talk about the economics. Repurposing that building or that real estate proximate to the mall will have its own challenges. Basically, you get into view, how does it interact with it? But remember my comment earlier, when you lose that department store, you are losing that anchor that the retailers that are populating the in-line retail space are counting on. And that's just a fact in the mall business. And so if you lose department stores, you should fully expect to lose the retailers in-line. And what happens then is you have this domino effect that becomes extremely difficult to stop.
So if you repurpose the mall area itself, why would you have to lose the department stores?
Because you don't have the right today to repurpose the mall. People have lease rights in there.
Okay, so they wouldn't agree. So they wouldn't agree.
You can't just walk in and say, all of you on three levels at three hundred and four hundred thousand feet, you're gone tomorrow. We don't have that right. They all have lease terms and rights to extend those leases.
Okay.
Right? And so as you build at a regional mall and do these kind of adding another building, if you will, you're doing it with a mindset, as time goes on, it's built so that it becomes part of a neighborhood you're creating, had you have built it originally that way. And you're doing the best you can to have it fit in to that new neighborhood it's creating.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Are there other comments or questions from commissioners who are here in the room? If not, I will turn to my colleagues on Zoom.
Yeah, I have a question.
Commissioner Zepone?
Yeah. As far as the construction of that project, is that going to be wood or masonry? What are you proposing?
I don't know that we're proposing any building typology right now. There was conversation earlier on that in the zoning code, there was a requirement for non-combustible materials. And that part has not been resolved at this point.
So I'm, I'm sure you have an architect on board, an engineering on board. So are they plotting anything right now? They drawing up any plans, any renderings or anything like that?
We have, we have renderings from the developer of the exterior of the building, but that's about, in an estimated unit count and layout with how it would be in a building. But that's as far as they've gone with drawings.
Okay. Then another question. Now, you're, you're saying there's going to be X amount of children in that complex, whatever the, the number you said, sixty-two or whatever. How can you really tell that's how many children are going to be going, living in that complex and going to public schools and thirty are going to private? How? I, I don't know what kind of calculations, you know. I just can't seem to, you really don't know. You can't say sixty-two here and thirty here. I don't care if Albert Einstein did the calculations. It, it, you can't tell. You can't tell. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Zepone. Other colleagues on Zoom wish to speak? I think Commissioner Vaughn has her hand up?
Yes, I do.
Please proceed.
Um, thank you. I just want to say thank you to Preet for answering all of the questions, for meeting with Peggy and myself personally several times, for meeting with the public over nine times. So for the people, the residents who are taking their, their personal opinion and saying that it's all residents don't have this information or that there weren't enough public meetings, that is simply not true. We have discussed several different options, and it just seems as though every question that we have asked, Preet has gone above and beyond to try to get us an answer or to come up with a resolution to make the residents happy. There are a lot of people that are bringing up only negative things. I have not heard a resident yet bring up the possible positive things that could be happening. There's no way to determine how many students would end up going to Abington. There's no way to determine how many students would end up going to private school, just as though there is no way to determine how many students go to Abington from residential living already or how many go to private schools here. So it's unfair to put that estimation or that negative spin solely on Preet when, as a community, we have several children that go to private schools that we pay for, you know, we handle their busing to the several private schools that they go to. So that just seems to be an unfair advantage. I think people have to be extremely mindful that times are changing, and the only thing constant in this world is actual change. We cannot stay the same Abington that we were in nineteen oh four, because in fact, if we did, I wouldn't be a commissioner, because prior to me, there wasn't a black female. So we have to go with the times, and we have to look at the things that are changing and evolving around us. I love Abington as much as everybody else, and I also live extremely close to the mall. I can see it from my door right now. So I think we need to be mindful of, of the positive things that could come from this and the, the, like, the green spaces that we have talked about. This project could help us increase some of the green spaces around the mall and in Ward Five. So I just, I think we need to be mindful fully of all of the things, the negatives as well as the positives, and not just harp on solely the negatives and have residents putting out this spin of untruthful information. And any residents that do want to speak to their commissioners can definitely call and talk to them. So I just wanted to say thank you to Preet and to the other commissioners in, in dealing with this very long process.
Thank you, Commissioner Vaughn. Commissioner Rothman?
I had a question. I, I didn't fully understand or appreciate Preet's answer as to the question on if there's a cap. I believe Commissioner Behe asked the question. Is it possible to have that explanation provided again? Because that is of significant concern to myself and many of the residents I've spoken with.
Mr. Manfredi, you seem like you want to say something? Or I'll, yeah, go ahead.
I'm happy to, happy to respond.
Sure.
So it's clear, as far as Preet's concerned, we're asking for one building, three hundred and sixty-five units.
Okay. Mr. Manfredi?
Because this is such a point, Mr. Herman, I know that question was asked of you in the Planning Commission, and I believe that was the same answer you gave.
Correct.
But it's also my understanding in, in conversations with you that Preet is not seeking in this ordinance amendment, anything more than three sixty-five, and that you would, if the board so choose to cap it at three sixty-five, you would have no objections. And not, not that you would have the right to object, but that certainly would be in keeping with, with what you're asking here. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Yeah, that's, that's an important point, and I do appreciate the clarification. All, I agree with Commissioner Schreiber's comments of it was kind of difficult to take a look, and I believe I've seen those documents before, but want to take a look again now that we had the benefit of hearing the explanation. And I know that it's not a final vote tonight, so I look forward to learning more information about the project as we continue. And I do appreciate that we've had a lot of meetings on this, but it's a critical, critical topic. It's, it's of concern to many of my residents, and I think that we should all continue to put the time in on this before we're at the point of voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. Other comments or questions from commissioners on Zoom? Okay.
Commissioner Bowe has his hand raised.
Oh, Commissioner Bowe. Sorry, Commissioner Bowe. I didn't see you.
That's okay. Thanks, Vice President Hecker. Mr. Herman, thank you. I, I've not had a chance to speak with you yet. I just want to thank you for all of the time you've spent with the residents of Abington as well as the administrators and elected officials. I wanted to offer, well, I wanted to get a couple of things on the table and then also just let you know sort of philosophically at a thirty thousand foot level where my head is at as we think through this. And I welcome any of your feedback. Generally speaking, I would love to participate in ongoing sort of working sessions to work through a couple elements of the text amendment. Among those, not an exhaustive list, are things like, I, I have a concern about the, the language around public land that's to be developed, and my understanding is that the retention pond that currently is there is sort of considered part of the, the public, public land. I have questions around safety precedent, you know, is this a thing that's normally done? How are we developing this? Who's maintaining it? What's the cost? Things like that. Electric vehicles, charging stations was an interesting one to me in the text amendment, particularly, and I believe that someone from the Planning Commission pointed out that it was interesting that it's in the bonus section. As a, you know, twenty-first century project with lots of different residents moving in in the direction that the automobile industry is headed, maybe I was reading it wrong, but it looked like there would be three electric vehicle charging stations in the parking lot, parking garage. That doesn't, again, I'm out, I'm out, this is not my bailiwick here. It doesn't seem like a lot to me. And then I had concerns around things like, you know, potentially smaller issues around, you know, moving the SEPTA waiting station from sort of Moreland Road to the other side of the parking lot and whether that's affecting commuters, whether they have to make them. So there, there are sort of things that I think are resolvable and issues in the text amendment that we can, that we can come to an agreement on, and those are the kinds of questions I have. The, the bigger issue for me is trying to better understand this, this sort of dependency relationship between the, the direction in which commercial malls are headed, right? And one of the solutions, not the magic bullet, but one of the solutions being putting three hundred and sixty-five residential units adjacent to the mall. And, and I say that because the, the model that I'm familiar with just from observing it and driving around is, is the mixed-use property where there is, on the first floor, restaurants, shopping, and people are coming downstairs, going shopping, parking, going into that community. I just, I'm sort of having trouble understanding how a strictly residential property adjacent to a mall that is in flux is of mutual benefit to both. I, I understand people will go over to the mall, but if the mall is in flux and the mall is changing, I'm having trouble sort of reconciling in my head the details of how that's appealing to people who are moving into a new unit when the mall's changing, right? So they're not, they're not all fitting together in my head into a, a master plan that's understandable. And I just, and I understand the situation that you're in, which is the ground is moving underneath you on a regular basis, but that's where I am. And I just think in the, in the weeks, months ahead, after I've been listening for, for months already, that's what I need to get a better understanding of. So thank you again for your time with us tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowe. I see Commissioner Thompson has his hand raised.
Thank you, Commissioner Hecker. Based on the comments that I'm hearing tonight, specifically the comments about the number of units and trying to cap it at three hundred seventy-five, as well as some of the public concerns, I would like to recommend that we move this to a land use committee meeting in lieu of moving it to the full board next month. And I would make a motion to do so.
There is a motion on the floor?
I'll second that.
There is a motion and a second. I guess we proceed to vote, or Commissioner De Placido?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. What was that motion for? I, I heard Mike, but I don't understand.
Sorry. The motion was to move the application to the land development committee meeting, or land use committee meeting next month rather than to the full board.
And can I, oh, oh, sorry, Vice President Hecker, can I ask a clarifying question, possibly of Commissioner Thompson or of Manager Manfredi?
You may, sir.
So, yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I concur. I think, I think it's time, I want to just add to Commissioner Thompson's comment, I do think it's time for us to gather up. I know many of us, sorry, we wanted a little bit, we've been in many conversations with residents, all of us, about this. I know a number of us have, have sort of remaining questions. I think it's time for sort of the clearinghouse of those questions. So I think it would be prudent for us to gather those and, and compile them and give them to Preet in advance of land use. Just to clarify, from, this is really, this is procedural, from land use, and maybe this is for you, Manager Manfredi, it could go from land use to the November full board meeting for advertisement for a December public hearing if we so desired. I, I mean, only because I, I do know that, I do know that Preet has talked about wanting a decision by the end of the year. If we so desired to have that hearing before the end of the year, would that be, that mechanism is possible, right? That, that flow as I described?
Yes. As of right now, the motion is for it to go to land use. If you vote on the motion as is, it would go to the land use committee on November third. Unless the motion is amended to say, and to come to the board at the November tenth meeting, then it would be in the land use committee until they finish their business.
So it would be, but it would, it would be, the land use committee, it would be within their purview to send it to the full board November tenth meeting for advertisement, if the land use committee so?
If they wanted to make that recommendation to the board that they, they met on November third, they've considered this, and, and their recommendation is to, to do that, then yes, it would come out of committee, be on the November tenth agenda, and you would consider their recommendation along with the application in front of you.
Okay.
If you want to assure that it comes back to you on November tenth to the regular meeting or to the committee of the whole, somebody should make an amendment to that motion, or if you want to leave it to, to the committee. It's, it's, it's a matter of what is the pleasure of the board.
With, I, oh.
I think we need one clarification, and maybe I misheard, Rich. You would not be voting on the tenth to approve it. You would be voting on the tenth to authorize advertisement for a future meeting. I think, I may have misheard the way.
No, that's exactly.
Now, Mike, Mike, what I was saying is they would be voting on what the recommendation of the committee was.
Correct. So on the third, the committee would hear it. If the committee sent it to the full board on the tenth, then what the board would be doing on the tenth would be voting to authorize advertisement for a future hearing.
If they so chose.
If they so chose.
Correct.
I, I'm sorry again for, for diving so deep into the weeds, but I think that it's out of just sort of fairness and for, you know, just kind of openness and understanding. I think that in fairness to Preet and in fairness to us and to residents, to understand what, what the flow is so people know when to, when they can expect at least the possibility of, here's the big decision. Here's the public hearing on the text amendments that, that would allow the creation of the apartment building.
Well, but to be, to be clear, what Solicitor Clark is saying is, is a very important point. If on the tenth, all you would be doing?
Is advertising.
It would be to advertise. There would still have to be the hearing in the.
Oh, no, no, that's what, that's what I'm saying. But that way, people would have a, people would have a calendar, like hypothetically, if it's, if it makes its way to advertisement at the November meeting, then there would be a public hearing presumably at the December meeting, and people could know, okay, this is when the board is going to make, is going to deliberate and, you know, either vote up or down or table or whatever, the actual decision on this matter that has been before all of us for quite a long time now. Is it, I'm just trying to say, if we were, if, 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 if there were to be an amendment to Commissioner Thompson's motion, saying that we're going to send it to land use and advertise on the tenth, does that take away the land uses committee to say, you know what, we're not, we're not ready, we're, we're, we're not committed to advertise? Okay. So I, I would not want to take away their power, but I, I mean, I think in good faith, if they, you know, if, if we get all our questions in, we get, we get answers from Preet, we kind of talk about, like, we sort of cut through all of the sort of year of, of, you know, confusion, misinformation, and talk about, these are the crucial issues that we all have questions on, our residents have questions on, and we can cut through that, I want the, I'd like the land use committee to at least have the option of saying, all right, send it to November tenth for advertisement for December public hearing.
They have that option.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Brodsky, and then I see Commissioner Carswell has their hands up.
Why are we complicating this? It's a straightforward issue. You can ask your questions, and then we can move it forward. You don't need to, to complicate this, to send us off on a separate path. Identify the issues. We're all here. We can all ask questions. I think the presentation was relatively clear. So streamline the process and either move it forward or kill it, one way or the other. Not kill it, but I'm just saying deny it. But why are we complicating this?
Thank you, Commissioner Brodsky. Commissioner Carswell?
Well, that provides a good segue into what I wanted to say. I think for the benefit of the public in particular, it's really important to understand that sending this to the land use committee is an opportunity for a subset of our board to go line by line through the written proposed amendment and make sure it actually fits what we would like to bring back to the board. So for example, when Commissioner Bowe asks the question about the electric vehicles or about the public land or any of the other pieces that people have asked questions about in these many, many months of meetings that have not been adjusted or added or even marked onto the original draft, that's our job. That's what our land use committee should be doing. And I, I'm fully in support of, of that move. I think that's the right next step.
Thank you, Commissioner Carswell. Are there any further comments or questions from commissioners, either in present or, or on Zoom? or on Zoom? Okay. We have a motion, and it's been seconded, and so nobody's offering an amendment, so then we will move forward. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
That was two opposed, I believe, Commissioners Zepone, Commissioner Vaughn.
Yes.
Okay, so that's, the motion passed.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Herman. We will move on to new business. We have, we will hold on to new business.
Well, just one, so everyone knows, the presentation you saw this evening, we received today in preparation for this evening.
Yeah.
That will go to all commissioners and will be posted at the appropriate place on the website.
Thank you, Manager Manfredi. We'll now move to new business, and our first item of new business is to consider approving advertisement of an ordinance to be numbered, amending Chapter 156 Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2 Traffic Regulation, Section 7 Speed Limits Established in Section 14 Stop Intersections, and Article 3 Parking Regulations, Section 25 Parking Prohibited at All Time, No Parking Between Signs, No Parking Here to Corner, Parking Prohibited Except Certain Hours, No Stopping or Standing, and Section 26 Parking Prohibited During Certain Hours, Section 28 Special Purpose Parking Zones to add 15 mile per hour speed limit during the hours of 8:15 and 9:00 a.m. and 3:15 p.m. and 3:45 p.m. to Woodland Road, add stop signs on Edgely Avenue at Oakdale Avenue, Elliot Avenue at Crestview Avenue, and Woodland Road at Cumberland Road, add no parking on Edgecombe Avenue from 2456 Edgecombe Avenue to Roslin Avenue, Ferryhill Road, Fitzwater Town Road and North Hills Avenue from 1065 to Elliot Avenue, add no parking here to corner on Jenkentown Road, handicapped parking in front of 1416 Edgewood Avenue, and remove no parking except certain hours on Fitzwater Town Road. Okay. I'll open this up for comments and questions as I catch my breath. Thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. Not, not really a comment on this specifically, but to the residents on Ward 8, especially those that live on Fitzwater Town Road, while we're very glad that Fitzwater Town has been repaid so beautifully, I'm sure that everybody has noticed the addition of bike lanes. I think some people are confused thinking that that's for parking. It is not. No parking signs will be going up on Fitzwater Town Road, and the current parking signs that are limited to certain times will be coming down. So I don't want, I don't want to speak for all of Fitzwater Town, but from Woodland to Moreland, there will be no parking on Fitzwater Town Road, and the bike lanes will be honored. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. President Spiegelman, did you have a comment?
I was going to make that motion because I like all of these, I like all of these things.
Let me just see if, are there any other comments or questions from either those here in the room or on Zoom? Hearing none, we will entertain a motion.
I move all of the above without actually having to read it out loud again.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The matter will move forward. And our final agenda item this evening is a motion to recommend approval to enter into a one-year agreement with the County of Montgomery, beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 31, 2022, with two additional one-year extensions for providing snow and ice clearance on county highways, bridges, sidewalks, and approaches. And before I open it up for comments and questions, I just want to reiterate that this is exactly the kind of agenda item that does not need this kind of deliberation. It should be, this would be to what the resident asked before. This is a matter of routine business. I guess I'm daring anybody to have comments or questions about this with those comments. Was not intentional.
Vice President Hecker, do you know, do you know which road in our township is our only county road?
I'm brain dead, please.
It's Easton Road!
Thank you, sir. Any comments or questions? Is there a motion to recommend approval?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The matter will move forward. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.[1772.11]